Now the order, now call this commission up.
Thank you, Sheriff. This time I'd like to ask Alex Hoffler, pastor of 2500, for your church in town, for his intention.
Thank you.
You want to say what you are, can you leave backwards? That's all. Thank you, Sheriff.
Lord, gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this night, for all those that are gathered here. We give thanks for the many and various forms of government that you would be with those who make decisions, those who attend meetings, those who legislate, those who work tirelessly for all of your children. We ask that you would help this group to make wise decisions, that you would give them your wisdom, your grace, and your peace, that you would always help us as your children to respect all of our opinions and those on many different sides of issues. We give you thanks for our nation, and we pray for our forces, we pray for those around us, for our neighbors in need, and for all those who are governing. We give you thanks for our county, for the various folks that live in our midst. We give you thanks for all the many and various ways that we live together, that we serve together, and that we are community. May your blessings be upon this meeting this evening, may your grace be upon us, and may we know your love and grace so that we may share it through all that we do and say, in the name of the one who created, formed, and made us, the one who loves and knows us, and the one who calls us to be with one another in love. And all these things, Lord, we know that you are with us, that you love us and care for us, and call for us to love all people. In your most holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. This time I'd like to ask Bob Heskey, a veteran, if he will listen or pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the representative for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can truly call for any other communication. This time we'll go to item four, and a roll call. Jackie Hudson said he might get a few minutes late. He said he looked like he was sitting there searching for a day, and he was pulling away from an angle we have there later. Okay, this is time number five, approve the agenda. I'd like to make one addition to that, adding under eight, M., Dr. Charles Lawson, our new county exclusive detective this year, who's not, and we're glad he's here. I thank him for his leadership, and his willingness to serve the citizens and students of our county, and our teachers, the role of place in that. And he would like to carry a few comments at the appropriate time. So if you would, on your agenda, I recommend we add that in as item eight, M., Dr. Charles Lawson. With that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, are you good? Oregon vote. Motion said, "That's good." Yes, I'd like to make a motion of number twelve of three, and number five of the comments. Okay. Okay. We have got that addressed, to cover that. And on our agenda, under TNA is more the change to the mission of judicial rule. We talked about it in our earlier meeting, about voting, and we reviewed and discussed and voted on changing that. But in research on that, by the book, do it right, we concluded that we need to first amend the procedural items, which will allow... So you're saying we can't move items up and down on the agenda? Or is it just that one specific item? Well, the specific item refers to amendment eight, item number twelve, we talked about. And I don't disagree, we can do that moving forward, but tonight, I make a motion to move number twelve up behind number five. We have a... Okay, so we've got two recommended... So we've got two recommended amendments to be moved, moving number twelve to actually on side of the comments. And I just said... We can't do that since we've got one motion on the table. No, we're paid in, and then having a verbal motion, and a second without... Do we have a second to second by actually craft?
Hold on just a second.
Yes, sir.
If one has, if one has amended that, so Commissioner Hall wants to amend the approval of the agenda, that's a problem, Mr. Rick. And then, is it not working?
Okay, motion to amend the law.
I got the section there. Oh, I knew I did. Now versus then.
We've got to make a motion, and a second by trying to amend that. So at this time, we will, we have discussion on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment, which is adding, taking out of twelve public comments up under item five, to approve the agenda. Discussion? Okay, let's go, please, on the amendment. Would you change your vice of public comments, twelve? I think yes, if it passes down, we'll be voting on it. Vote to add amendments to add Dr. Lawson under eight, M., for his comments.
And hold agenda.
And hold, yes, hold agenda, yeah, hold agenda.
Are we going to the session yet?
We had a motion to second, and now we're going to the discussion on the motion to approve of the law.
I would like to ask why number nine is being where it is, filling the commissioner, Commissioner A.C.?
That's under P.
We have always done that as one of our first items, business, as part of the age.
I think if I am...
So we can sleep now, and then go to some next step, if there's anything on the mission now.
Okay, with that, I think we'd like to turn, turn on everything. Any other discussion? May I propose to approve the four agenda? Right, okay, that's it.
Look, it's just a resolution?
Yes, sir.
Did you mark that on the agenda?
No, sir. I did, but no. That'll run through the legislature maybe. It's gonna take two weeks tonight, okay? So I was going to add that, but no, we won't add that on the agenda tonight. Any other discussion? Okay, go, please. Now the court will be open to public comments, and as we discussed in our last session, we'll have anyone who wants to address the board. Like we would ask that you, I hope we have a pad there, that you're putting down your name and address, to verify that you're a citizen of Hockley County, and your comments will mention two minutes, and the total time range between minutes. So we now, anyone from the public who wants to address the board? Not only once, but... Laura Nelson, to address the commission.
I recognize that, and...
I remember that coffee can... Just to clarify here, there was a question, does the public comments have to address this evening's current agenda for the meetings, or can other things be presented?
Current agenda, yes. Current agenda. That was in the discussion, November, correct? I'm bringing popcorn, so excuse me, but it's your time. If no one then is going to address any issue, we will close this opportunity. If you want to end the item number... Review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting, have on your prayer. Okay, my hundred and second, I'll... On the second discussion. Thank you, guys, appreciate you being here. Discussion? No, that is both, please. You're approving the minutes of the previous meeting. I think yes, I said. And motion carries, item seven.
Resolutions of Memorial Cemetery Accommodation. Resolution 2020-01, Resolution in Honor and Recognition of Allen C. Ledge Harper for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County. Whereas Allen Harper earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as Coffee County Highway Superintendent from 1994 until 2010, sixteen years. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Allen Harper for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further reserved, resolved, that the family of Allen C. Harper receive a copy of this resolution and a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record.
This time I'd certainly like to thank Bush for his outstanding service for all these years, and his anyone from his family here tonight, I'd like to recognize them if they're here, okay? We want to thank him for his service, so at this time, I want to make a motion to approve the resolution, this statement. A motion by what, and a second by Ashley, discussion. There being no special, let's go, please.
Item seven B, Resolution 2020-02, Resolution in Honor and Recognition of Judge Timothy Brock for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Timothy Brock earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as General Sessions Judge Part One of Coffee County from 1990 until 2019, nineteen years. Judge Brock also presided over the Coffee County Drug Recovery Court, the Coffee County Mental Health Court, the Coffee County Juvenile Recovery Court, and the Coffee County Safe Fakenet Court. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Timothy Brock for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved, that the family of Timothy Brock receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record.
Sure, one, thank you. Thank you. We like that changed, and certainly like to thank Judge Brock for his outstanding service and city of his family here tonight. We want to thank him for his service, and he really impacted a lot of... His service was outstanding, and in the service that he had, that Sunday, his first Michael's made president of the service, but he commented, I think I shared this with some of you before, that one day they were registered off court, and Judge Brock wasn't up there. So that night, somebody called for him, asked where he was, whatever, he'd forgotten that he had court that day. So when he came in, he fined himself fifty dollars, and then gave that to three, back to feed some others or whatever. So blah, blah, blah. For certain, well, thank him for his service. Okay, we have a... Got a motion second, a motion by Taylor, second by Cunningham, discussion? And there being none, let's go, please. He and I were having a discussion in his office about a week before he passed away. I did not know that, but he also had an old heart surgery ten years before, and I did not know that he was in a picture of health, and he was walking ten miles a day, we did, ten miles a day, five in the morning, five in the evening, so outstanding service, right? Okay. I think, yes, thank you.
Okay, there being no other. Number eight, Elections, Appointments, and Confirmations. Eight, no reason.
Now a motion to approve, go, please. No? Oh, I believe?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we did motion second, didn't we, I understand? A motion by Tim, second by David, or... Uh, discussion?
Well, my, my question was, is that we have the election for all of these committees that won here, but I thought in a previous commissioners meeting that we had voted that we were supposed to see the information sheets on who was gonna be on those committees, so that they would know who they were and their backgrounds before we voted.
Nobody, what information sheets you talking about, or which one?
On all committees, we have set forth that the forms had to be filled out, so with resume...
Nobody's filled out any forms. We don't have any.
Yes, you're right.
We're doing that this right now.
No, 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 but I mean, for all the other committees is what I'm talking about.
This is our own result. Any other discussion? Let's go, please.
Eight D, Beer Board.
Okay, on Beer Board, we reviewed that last night with Rule Office, since those members are members of Rule Office, and they're okay with leaving those on Beer Board as it is. So do I have a motion to approve those? I need to read the names to you. A motion by, a question second by... Discussion? Yeah. I think they're willing to serve as the board they're on, or committee they're on. So with that, let's go, please.
Eight C, Purchasing Commission.
Oh, Purchasing Commission, we have five layers, and county mayor served in one of those. I'm trusting that the others are willing to serve. I think, I believe in that, and part would serve, and part, but I did talk to Paul McBride, who's willing to step aside on that, and I'm asking Mr. Paul McColl, he was a economics professor at Bell University for fifteen years, so I'm asking if he would serve in that role as our field purchasing commission. Have a motion by Tim, second by David, or, discussion? Thank you for willing to serve, Paul. Any discussion? There being none, let's go, please.
Eight D, Planting Commission.
Okay, on Planting Commission, those are four of our everybody bodies, those before your terms. We have two members that their terms are expiring, Ms. Carol Willis, has a full-time farming family, and Carol has served on that commission for years, and Paul Eagle has also served, and they both have served well for years, and I'm asking the commission to approve those two. And we will have a third one, another one to approve in March. Mr. Tim Morris has resigned, but on that, we have to add those that want to serve, and that we've got forms here that we would actually fill out on a citizen participation form. I think the public, you may already picked those up. I have some other ones here, if anybody wants to pick those up, to send them in to request, reconsider for that commission. But with that, my motion is that we approve those two, and I have presented, and the, Mr. Morris, he will be, that position will be replaced in the morning. A motion, please. And those were reviewed last night with Planting Commission, or, excuse me, the Rule Office. Motion by Cory, and a second by Taylor. Okay, motion second, discussion, right, for those.
Okay, this is going back to, I didn't see any boards on the two that you appointed for us to look at before we vote. And again, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I thought that on all committees that we were gonna at least see some information on who you appointed before we voted.
Okay. Although, since I don't know if we ever addressed that, or if that was an issue, I don't know. Those have served well for years, and I thought we had been right to go ahead and team with those. I could ask them to send forms, if you'd like, that if you wish. Okay, Sheriff, I...
I think the commission, the... So the two that he appointed are incumbents, so that sort of, I would think would circumvent application process, that's the way I look at it. But I would like to say, as a member of the Planting Commission, we had elected for a long time, we had a recent meeting with a lot of business to take care of, and we only had three people show up. It takes four of the seven members to conduct the meeting, and I was really hoping the mayor would have an appointment for us tonight, but he chose not to. And I would like to say that Mr. Tim Morris, I couldn't say this for the confidence at hand, but I would like to commend Mr. Morris for his service as chairman and member of the Planting Commission, because he did a real good job, he chairs the meeting as well as anybody that ever seen him. And he works as the director of the school bus garage, or whatever, he knows the buses. And due to the fact that drivers for buses are so hard to obtain these days, Tim finds himself in a bus every day, and including the days of the Planting Commission meetings, which is at 4:00 p.m. So he could not attend at least nine months out of years. So I think it was a great thing that he did, step up and turn in a resignation, so somebody could fill that spot that can attend. And I do want to reiterate my previous statements and previous meetings, if you're appointed to a committee, be there. There's a reason for it, and there's a reason you were picked. So be at the committee meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sheriff, I...
I guess my question is, Dennis speaking kind of brings up a red flag. If there's only three people attending the plant meetings, are we reappointing two people that are not attending and not fulfilling their role?
No, those have been attended. Those two, as you were speaking, is Willis and, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
They are with him.
Are they attending or are they not? Because I don't agree with reappointing somebody that they're not attending a meeting.
They are attending.
I'd like to respond to that. Actually, the two you reappointed, the two that were after a day that we had to prove...
The last, yeah.
And it should not happen. Mr. Eagle, I imagine, has some health issues, and we talked with him, because he, you know, he has some health issues, Carol has not. But I'd say, and so, all the corporations there, to get big, because some of them couldn't do it, so it was pretty, pretty important.
Yeah, we did only have three, and I wasn't sure which of those three, so those two were coming there last week. Commissioner Huff?
So I just want to comment on Ashley, Dennis. I mean, this is a pretty big committee, and when you're reappointing somebody that you haven't asked if they're willing to serve, can I ask why? I mean, why wouldn't you reach out to Mr. Eagle and find out if he's able to serve, and if he wants to, before we put him on there for four more years?
He's been willing to serve, but I did not ask him that. So, yes, he's served well and fast, he served you.
Mr. Hunt, I know, you've got a right to get a health issue, and you probably should ask that before we put someone for four years in county.
I want to butt in, Mr. Eagle, does fill, of the seven members, we didn't need a minority.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ehlman meets that right too. And I, I actually thought about who could have his money.
I don't think, I don't think. Okay, uh, no.
Well, that brings up the question about Mr. Anderson and then Mr. Cunningham, who have this. But then, again, I don't know all of these people personally, and I would have liked to have seen that information before I voted tonight. But then, the information was brought forward that Mr. Cunningham was related to Mrs. Cunningham, who is a commissioner, so then it brought forth the issue, is that not a conflict of interest? Yes, no, maybe, don't know. So again, if I'd seen that information, I could have answered all my questions before I had voted tonight.
Okay, Ms. Miller.
Well, no one's ever brought that up, and he's been on there a long time. I think it was a freak accident, that there was only three people there, I think Dennis would probably admit that. Every planning committee that's been planned has had a majority there, a forum there, so that they can take care of business, and was highly embarrassing to them. Having said that, and I would emphasize what Dennis said about the necessity of your own committee. You need to be there, if you don't commit, if you can't be there, or you know your schedule, can't do it. But I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill here for these two people, because Mr. Ehlman is at most meetings, I think Dennis should say that, and so is Miss Willis. So I think it was just a freak accident, I think we're spending entirely too much time talking about this. But as far as a conflict of interest, I don't have anything to do with the planning committee. He doesn't have anything to do with what I do. So we're two different people, no one's ever said anything through the years here. So I guess it's not a conflict.
Yeah, we thought it was a conflict. Okay, Chair recognizes, we'll call the vote.
I said all I need to say.
Okay, all right. Motion to- Yeah, motion, please. So we have motion on these two things. Okay, I'll call the vote.
I have a motion for a man.
Okay, all right.
I have a motion for a man, I'd like to say what is.
Okay, with that in mind, is it okay for those two that are present on layer two to continue or be here too?
We don't, we're in church.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's not, like I said, the attendance is, I think only at that one meeting that I've heard of. I've been there for years, whatever, and that's my last, I think that's the first meeting I recall where they did not have a forum. And you will have attendance in that case where you lay down, for whatever reason, those three members are just meeting.
My other concern is, is do we have people in this community that would like to serve on things like this? And are not getting the opportunity, because they don't know to, when these come up, that there are forms to fill out. I understand we had no form, did anyone call for forms? Did anyone have the idea that this was gonna come up? I think most of the rule office have no clue when these committee appointments come up. And I'd like to see more people in our committee involved, younger.
I don't know if we have-
No, we're wrong with the two that we have. If one does have a health issue though, and I know Brother Ehlman, and I have a lot of respect for him, but I also know he could be the one that if he did the job, he wants to do it. But he can, I think he would also tell you, but I think we probably should at least find out, if we're able to.
Here's the last meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, before he-
Question right here. On this particular item, you've got two options. One is to title it, which if you title it, then at some later point, a motion would have to be made to take it from the top. The other option would be to postpone it until the next meeting.
Could I change my phraseology? I meant to say postpone. I would like to postpone this.
Till, till the next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so a motion to postpone, okay, and second by after. Discussion. Chair recognizes, time again.
Well, that's two months away, they have a lot of business to take care of. You're taking two members away that need to be on it, that need to carry on.
No, ma'am, we're not being taken off, they're just saying, they're being here.
That'll take over.
Found you, sorry.
So there's going to be serving until the March.
I'll put it better.
Okay, go, please.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, so this actually is postponed for the next meeting. Okay, next.
Eight E, county records committee.
I have asked Judge, or we have asked Judge Leslie to serve in the, since Judge Rockwell and Willis, he has agreed to do that. So I'm asking that the commission approve Justice Lee for that, for that position. And rest of those serving as they have it. Motion by Patrick, second by Harry, discussion.
How often does that committee meet, and then when is the last time they met?
They, a meeting was requested in November, they met about a year or two ago. Meeting was requested in November, there wasn't enough there to show, so the meeting was not held. I talked with Miss Willis today, she, I asked her would she go ahead and get another meeting scheduled, she said she would.
So, another question to be back off that, what does that committee exactly do?
That is a good question, I think, whenever Miss Willis has them, I would bring up as the spoken records, and we have a county retention, I think this was asked last night, Mr. Carr, we have a county retention schedule for all departments, whatever, as far as the dates, so on, the records can be purged, and so on, so we do have that record here, as far as questioning records can be purged. No, but enter your question, not, but, uh, no.
Commissioner Crapp, I will mention to you that it was brought up in legislative, having to do with all of the duties for the committees. And we do have records of the standing committees, of what their responsibilities are, of what they're doing, and I believe either, I think Ms. Buckner had copies of those, and once we got them all together, we were going to distribute those. But on some of the other committees that weren't the standing, we didn't have anything of record of when they were to meet, what their responsibilities were, but we are addressing it.
Yeah, we had, our office has sent out the four copies of the standing committees, material standing committees. Okay, any other discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Ray. Motion being to approve Justice Leslie for the records committee. And the other members remaining as, as if, I serve on that, but it's not a whole result. We have a second to that. Got a second, okay, so we're voting. Motion for gratitude, and second by Margaret, to, to approve, yes, to approve Justice Leslie's to the meeting. The others, yes, I, okay. Nineteen yes, okay.
Eight G, no, eight F, Board of zoning appeals.
Two terms expiring, uh, Jimmy and Bobby, both of those have said they would be willing to serve again. And also, I would ask that Connie Sizemore, she had been set up years ago as an associate member, and that that be approved as well, so we have a motion, we have a motion by, second by David, on that. Approving those as mentioned. Discussion. Okay, Ms. Hopp.
Once again, I'd like to express the importance of this board. Board of zoning appeals has probably as much power and authority as any board or committee at the county level that you can imagine. Anything that is in our zoning resolution can be forgiven, if you will. If you feel aggrieved by zoning requirements or restrictions, the Board of Zoning Appeals has certain pretty good latitude to grant you, relate, and make you whole. Having said that, the attendance of the five members requires three to do business. We really do have, I think I've been to one VCA meeting years ago that we did not have a forum. Only two of them showed up. We got a real good record with the membership that is there as far as attendance goes. And I'd just like to thank the other membership, being the associate member. I don't think Tennessee Code allows us to have an associate member for the planning. I've done a great deal of research. But see, what Miss Sizemore does, in case two appointed members, full members, are going when she shows up, and she does, she automatically takes the place of the full member. So we do have a forum, and we can conduct business. So her position is just as important as the full members. And I just want to thank all the other five, the four members and associates for the work that they do.
I thought that they've served every year as well, that is a critically important board. And I appreciate the service that they're giving. So, any other discussion? There are being none, so go, please. Motion is to approve of Mr. Bryan and Dennis Hunt, and Connie Sizemore as associate member to that board.
Eight G, rural roads and bridges.
We reviewed that last night, and the rule office, I would, I would say that I did want to review this with every office last night, as far as things are focused or whatever. And so going forward, that rule office did last night, that is school members. And I said they're okay with serving as they are Mr. Bartley, our highways, who has served on there as well. So this night, we got motion by Tiger, and second by Ashley, to approve, discussion. There are being none, so go, please. Approving the, those members to rural road bridge committee as presented. Okay, motion here.
Eight H, veteran service officer.
I would ask that Mr. Gene Stillings be approved again as our veteran service officer, represent the veterans, serve the veterans in Compalet County. Motion. And I would ask you to be in prayer for Gene, in that he is seriously guilty. I have a motion by David, and a second by one. Discussion. Discussion there being none, let's go, please.
Nineteen yes.
Well, nineteen yes, okay.
Eight, judicial commissioner.
Mr. Paul Sylvia has been recommended to be the field expedition. And I talked with Mr. Bobby Trail, and he highly recommends him, and Bobby has oversight of the judicial mission program, and missing my break, that he was recommended to lead last Thursday. Mr. Paul Sylvia, he's a former alpontrist, and Mr. Trail very highly, as far as his capabilities and whatever. I think he's already starting some training. So I recommend Mr. Paul Sylvia, I have a motion by Mr. Orson, second by Mr. Taylor, discussion.
Okay, so I'm looking at the form here, for judicial commissioners, and then you mentioned, I don't see that one here. I see Bobby Trail, Bob Bellamy, Paige Berg, Jim Hatfield, Colonel Walker, Bobby Patel, and Delaney Chapp.
Okay, Paige has resigned, and also, who's the other?
He wouldn't be added until he's settled out.
He's going off, and vice versa. She's full, he's full time, okay? So he will be taking Paige's place. So those forms are you to mention a member, but she just hasn't written them. And so the committee acted on it last Thursday, and asked for a recommendation, placing Paige for full time. This is, do you know, still working some full, part-time? And I was on there too. I must say, any other discussion? Okay, let's go, please. Voting in favor of Paul Sylvia as a full-time position commissioner, we have three on the ten.
Eight A, 911 district communication board.
Okay, now those forms, three terms coming up, I didn't. As Lonnie Nolan has been representing Manchester, as has Chief, Chief Yoder has been representing, representing his term is expiring, as is the rule, remember on that. And Mrs. Duckfield, his term is expiring, and I'm asking him, will he, he was stepping out, and he has, and we're appointing Chief, town hall police chief, Jason Williams, who has served on our, our, I've had one. And I would share with you information that Ms. Ardrey's been listed the other day, that I think we have, you would not tell me this, blew my mind too, about 6,000 monthly calls. My director left that, I have, on our monthly number one center, and about 88% of those are law enforcement related. So we thought it'd be appropriate to have our two police chiefs and the, and our sheriff on that ten. So those three names I'll present to you. Chief, town hall appointment, Chief Williams, and Mayor Norman, and Manchester Police Chief, Mark Yoder. Those two regional, county sheriffs. I have a motion by Mr. David, and a second by Margaret, discussion. Chair recognizes, you correct.
Uh, this comes from a place of eagerness, so please remember that. This is the county 911, is that correct? Do the other, do the two seats have their own 911 boards? So it is totally for the county?
Yes.
Okay.
There, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Good question.
I didn't know there was a duplicate or not.
Yeah, good question. That's a team, and they're there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, on Christmas night or whatever. Diane has done a good job with, represented, I think you have about twenty team members, and they cover the county very much, but who would have thought, uh, whether, if you're gonna share with our commissioners, that public, they have six thousand halls they mark in that center. So, there is, and they represent sort of, so, any other discussion? There are being announced, vote please.
Eight K, highway commissioners, the four districts, eleven and twelve.
As you remember, uh, Mr. Duke, good sir, um, as elected, how the commissioner of years passed away, and, uh, his wife, Ms. Duke, has expressed an interest in continuing to complete his term, and no one else has, uh, come forward with offer to serve or whatever, and, uh, the rural office reviewed that last night and got a really good recommendation regarding that, so, with that in mind, I would place Ms. Carolyn Duke, paying forward to you, and you have a motion, a second voted by David and a second by Martin, discussion. And I want to thank her for her willingness to serve. Mr. Duke served well for me, and, oh, discussion, let's go, please. Nineteen yes, thank you.
Eight L, and General Sessions Judge Part One.
That will be addressed out of ten B below. We put it up there because that was to be an appointment or confirmation, so, I at least wanted to address that, and it refers to it being addressed below. So, at this time, uh, out of AM, I recognize Mr. Charles Lawson for his comments, and we welcome him to the vote, and appreciate his service. He's a fellow Halkin from rural part of Hillport, and we're known as part of a good, great county. And we're glad you're here to serve.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. And I just, part of this is just to make an introduction of myself. Uh, as Mayor Cordell said, my name's Charles Lawson, I'm the director of schools. Just this past Friday, been on, been in the job for six months. Um, I have been referred to as that guy from Alaska. I have also been referred to as that guy from Oklahoma. And while I was honored to both work and live in Alaska, and work in Oklahoma, I did grow up in this community. It is wonderful to return home and lead the county schools, and I have truly enjoyed the last six months. And there's, you know, there's about half a dozen people looking at me right now that met me at various points before I became director anywhere. Uh, there's one individual here that's known me since I was quite small. There's others that met me as a teen, elementary school, and even as an adult in other roles. But, uh, but I, I wanted to put my face in front of this board, in front of this commission rather, to make sure that you guys knew who I was, the role that I filled, and, uh, I wanted to, uh, to say that I'm here to serve this community. We are here as a district to do what's best for these students, and that's going, that's going to be the easiest thing to accomplish if we work closely together. Uh, the only item of business that I was wanting to discuss, and it's, and it's not anything that will take any action, I'll be meeting with the, uh, with finance at some point. I've already been to a couple of those meetings about some other issues, but going forward, at one time, this predates me, but at one time, Mr. Pettigo addressed this body on an issue about the restructuring of the rural debt. And I'm going to try to remind you of that, I believe that was this past spring sometime, that rural debt is what provided the county schools with buses. Uh, when that was restructured, that no longer is an option. And so, what will happen is, our expenditures on our transportation line is, are ahead of, of what they should be. Because of that, we're, since it's no longer covered under rural debt, we are going, we are pulling that money from the transportation line, and in order to get that to balance at the end of the year, we will be dipping into, um, uh, what's the term? Let's see, that's, uh, fund balance, I'm sorry. So, we, there, that is a possibility, and that's a short-term fix for us, but as you are probably well aware, fund balance is for primarily one-time expenditures, capital projects, things that have to get done. We have to continue to improve our schools, we have a variety of projects that need to be done. Buses are a recurring cost, between four and five hundred thousand dollars a year, depending upon how many buses we need at any given year. And so, what I'm going to be approaching and working with mayor's office and with budget and finance and that kind of thing, is trying to figure out how we can fund those buses without continuing to, uh, to whittle down our fund balance for the county schools. But again, that's not a, that's not an item of business, I'm just warning you, probably you'll see me again up here at some point in the coming months to discuss that particular topic. But, again, what I wanted to do is I wanted to make sure that you knew who I was, you have a face, that if you sit me in public, you know what my role is. I will also encourage you to do this, one thing before you have, before you face that decision. If you have concerns about how the district, the school district spends money, if you have concerns about whether the money that you are approving at any given time is worth it or is being wasted, I'm gonna tell you, my office and the people in my office are always available to answer those questions. I have principals in the schools who are always anxious to meet with commissioners and meet with public representatives to make sure you're aware of how that money is being utilized for the good of this county. And so, I would encourage you, if you, if you're faced with a decision at some point whether to, uh, to fund something as far as the school district is concerned, I don't want you to vote against it because you're worried it's gonna be wasted. Please make sure that you talk to me, talk to my deputy director, Kelvin Shores, or anybody in my office down there, just right here at the end of the building, or anybody in our buildings, our principals stay up on what they need, and they can give you a very thorough explanation of how our funds are being used. But, uh, but again, I appreciate your time and your attention, and I'll let you get on with your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles, I love you, Lawson. Appreciate your service, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
That resolution that Charles signed, and I just corrected it, twenty-nine dollars.
Unfinished business, number nine, District eight, Commissioner's seat. So, as you know, before, we have two candidates that have gone through the process and are willing to serve, and I appreciate their willingness to serve this county, uh, Mr. Tim Brown and Dr. Jeff Keel. And, uh, at this time, I think we're gonna have a force vote, and, okay, Stephanie's going to, uh, she was actually starting with, uh, Ms. Moore.
Sheriff, do we need to put these names in nomination?
Uh, it already been, we're doing it. Yes, already open. Thank you for checking that. Okay, so these two have been duly nominated before, and so this is not unfinished business, so this time, hold on.
DeBellas.
Tim Brown.
Hollenworth.
Tim Brown.
Rocket.
Tim Brown.
Fox.
Tim Brown.
Bryan.
Jeff Keel.
Hunt.
Jeff Keel.
Cunningham.
Jeff Keel.
Ford.
Dr. Keel.
Taylor. Mr. Brown. Fielding.
Mr. Brown.
Pratt.
Dr. Keel.
Wright.
Tim Brown.
Thorpe.
Tim Brown.
Miller.
Keel.
Tim Soufield.
Keel.
Milton. Um, Barbara Buckner.
Jeff Keel.
Duncan. Cracktree.
Dr. Keel.
Seaborn.
Dr. Keel.
Nine for Brown, ten for Keel.
So, no one received, eleven? That's how eleven? Okay, no one received, they were guarded. So, this will be, you delay again, see how the election coming up on March the third, for that position, if whatever, so, we'll see how that turns out. And so, the person that, the person receiving those votes surely will be.
I have commonly, as, as, what the resolution we're going to track here, three meetings regarding the judge, the primary, and the fact that whoever wins the primary will ultimately win by default to the general. Will this commissioner's seat fall into the same scenario? Is there, uh, the, I'm assuming, if rumor has it correctly, the two that we are voting on have qualified for the primary, so, would we need to have a resolution or a motion to say that whoever wins? Does anybody know if there are Democratic candidates for Commissioner's seat now? There's not, so, I'm wondering, should this be handled exactly the same way that we go ahead and say whoever wins that primary is, uh, the interim commissioner to the general? Would that be appropriate?
If we're only done that way, if it came to come up to be addressed, uh, it came up in the other situation, because of some legal connections that had to be addressed, and that was a good solution, and was, and was followed and presented, and it is being presented, under some items that I got consulted with the administrative office, the court, um, and so, in the same scenario, the appointment could be done the very same way. And we could, since we don't have one, we could, we could bring a, a resolution up in March to just prove.
So, in other words, we would have to do it from now, we would ask the people.
Right, it's gonna be, just like the resolution up in June.
Okay, we'll now move into the business.
All right, ten A, changing commission procedural rules. This is the change with the agenda, limited public comments on the agenda.
Do I have a, give a motion, do I have a motion to, uh, amend the procedural rules to change the public comments section on the agenda from item twelve down to right after item five, we talk. Vote, vote by Cracktree, second by Ray. Discussion, Chair recognizes, DeBellas.
My right to speak was on before this motion, and then it was raised up. I just had a question, uh, regarding if the two candidates that we have are on the ticket for the March election primaries.
I understand, yeah.
Okay, there. Careful, prevent the next one. Any discussion on the motion? Also, who else?
I'll, I'll take, I'm sorry. Who's, who, and are the, I know this moves, uh, to take the gun on the general. Who says the rules for this thing, is that part of this? Is that still gonna go through, hey, explain it.
I'll take that for you, guys, please. I know discussing the last, I thought that was ever.
We had voted on all of the procedures in our last commissioners meeting. So, it was a procedural thing, and that's why it was added, uh, to that, but all the guidelines were set forth, and we voted on it again on our last commissioners meeting.
I feel that we'd like to, we'd like to also ever, maybe all around, uh, in this, oh, this is a federal body, or a procedural route, that's why I saw. I have a motion, uh.
Just to be clear, uh, when they, in the public has the right to speak, would you limit the hours, minutes, room, and hours?
Ten people, three minutes, no more than thirty minutes, is I believe what we discussed.
I thought y'all were discussing.
I'm standing here, but that's what we discussed, on the general policies and procedures at that point. I'm giving to the twenty, to the public.
I could tell you what the items were, there was a sign-up sheet prior to the meeting, the morning of the speech, had been called county residents. Only agenda items could be addressed, ten minutes per speaker, a total of twenty minutes.
I'm sure y'all have this all written down somewhere, correct? I'm sure y'all have this written down somewhere, correct, guidelines? Okay, just check.
It should have been in the minutes.
I'm here, is your being your minutes legislated, correct?
It did not come through legislative.
It did not, it's gotta be somewhere, y'all discussed that, he just, uh, tagged off exactly what was said in the legislature. Okay. Okay, just check. And carry on.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wright.
It's okay, I think somebody answered it.
Okay, any other discussion? Not a lot.
I wondered if it might not be a good idea to put these guidelines on that sign-up sheet? When we lay one out there, so whoever signs up will know what the rules are.
Other discussion? Let's go, please.
Ten B, resolution two thousand twenty oh three, resolution to appoint as interim general sessions judge, Part One, and winner of the Republican Party Republican primary, in that no one has qualified in the Democratic primary or as an independent candidate for the office.
This time, I'm all, I'm here to share something with you as far as research.
Uh, in, in preparation for this resolution, we, uh, several things were considered. There had been a recommendation, I understand, by the judges, uh, and discussing the mayor, that, like, there, although there was going to be some, some interims, uh, assistance from other judges, uh, of the outside area, that an interim appointment might be made, but it'd be preferable to make that appointment for someone who was retiring or who was, uh, not planning on being in the race to, so they, for the time, there wouldn't be a, uh, something to affect the, the election on the matter. And then, uh, there was discussion about, uh, the timeframe, and the, and the name of the turn came up that was retiring, it would be considered for that part. Then they looked at the factor that you've got a timeframe in which the county should act, and the, and the issue. act and the, and the issues about complying with that, uh, requirement. And, uh, and then in our particular situation, we had a unique circumstance. Normally, our primary elections are made, that would be after the hundred and twenty days. But in this situation, because the presidential, Super Tuesday primaries, this year, our primary elections are in March. And so the, the consideration came up of since there's a primary election in March, and as it turned out, we would know the deadlines came in the past and we learned the fact that there are four candidates who qualified for that, for the Republican primary. No candidates qualified for the Democratic primary and no candidates qualified as independents. Means in essence that whoever wins the Republican primary will be unopposed in the general election in August. The only thing that would change that since nobody qualifies as a Democratic candidate or an independent, the only way someone could beat whoever the Republican winner is at the primary on March the third is by winning a write-in campaign to defeat the nominee. And the only situation I can think of in the state where that had occurred in my lifetime was when one candidate killed the other candidate during, during the, pending the election. Uh, and, uh, the widow waged the successful write-in campaign to defeat the opponent who was in prison. So I don't, under the circumstances, add something very unusual happening over that of the one who won the primary, whoever wins that primary on March third, which is a short few, of course, is going to be the winner in, in, uh, at the office general election and take office. Here's the key, the winner of the general election takes office in August, September one. And so we started looking at, at the mayor, as we looked into it and talked about the fact of the timing and how it worked with the statute. And, and also, uh, we had to pick my wits on and I said I wanted to consult with the administrative office of the courts. Tennessee Supreme Court has a division, the administrative office of the courts, and they have legal counsel. And they're a good source of information on things connected to courts. And so I consulted, we kind of had a plan on, on how to might approach it. And I consulted with the administrative office of the court and we laid out our situation that, that in light of the fact of closeness to the election, consideration we, this commission, uh, since the, uh, the laws in Tennessee and the physical constitution said our judges could be elected as a people. And since we have an election coming up, which, it within the hundred and twenty day period, which is going to be, in essence, the election that all of the control, because there's no opposition, selecting the candidate who was successful in that primary would be just proving the people's choice to serve not only in an interim, but, uh, not only in the, in the interim, because it, it, some people thought that if you had that election, they'd just automatically take office. But that's not the case. It still takes that interim one. And so I talked with the general counsel administrative office of the court and she made clear that, of course, they didn't have any approval authority or any authorities saying yes or no. But I, I went through these things with her, my understanding of the law, to pick her wits and, and see that, make sure that she was concurring or if there was any, any view that she had different from mine, I wanted to let me know so we could weigh that out. And, and she said first off, when I went through the thing, she was delighted to, for the call and hear what I said, I understand the law to be about. Even that election, when I'm actually put them in, it's still needed that interim appointment. But we could die through the way we were looking at it. And she said she was so relieved to hear that because she had read online, some of the articles that had been in the paper, where about three different things got ran together about a judge being appointed for the Supreme Court to take the position and about the commission appointing. And then, and it was all jumbled together, the three together. And she said she was kind of afraid of, uh, where, where, where it was going. And I, I explained to her that we were kind of panicked when we saw that article too, because it did have three different processes they were talking about. Number one, the, the appointment of, by the Supreme Court, the judge coming in, that's just temporary help. That judge cannot be a judge in this town, he is such, because he's not ready to get in, wouldn't make the law of the day. He's a failure in the past when we had, when Judge, uh, Rollins was killed. We had judges coming in all the time to help us from other parts. But in any event, we, I went over with her that we, that we suggested drawing a resolution that in light of the fact that we had four candidates running, had qualified running in the, in the, in the Republican primary, the deadline was passed, there was no candidates qualifying Democratic party or as independent, that our commission, since we didn't even fill the gap between, uh, now and, uh, September one, sometime here in that period, because the election doesn't take effect on until September one, even though we know the winner of that year. And, and pose the idea of, of passing a resolution that we've got before you tonight that recognizes these things and at the same time recognizes that the election itself wouldn't put them in the office until September one. And that that election is the voice of the people. And so we as a commission, if they pass this resolution, could vote in essence to point not a person by name, but the winner of that primary as the interim, to fill the interim up until September one, when they would assume the office per the election. And so, uh, and, and that makes sense that, uh, she said she couldn't officially approve it, but she thought everything we had in there covered everything and would be approved. Because it first recognizes you've got to fill that gap. This action to fill it, you're not, you don't know ahead who's going to win then. I personally want my sons winning, but he's running for it, maybe we can go for it. And whoever wins that primary, if this resolution is passed, would then assume the duties and go ahead and take office. If you deny it, then the commission would have to select someone. But, and it, uh, it would be, if you pass the resolution, it'll automatically approve whoever the winner is. If you don't pass it, then it's still being coming from the commission to select someone to fill in.
Thank you, Ma'am, for that overview and that presentation. So we have a motion, uh, unhammed second by Ryan to approve. Mary, you have a comment or question?
Just, yeah, one question, there is one caveat in this. To be able to vote for either one of those or any of the four, uh, to be able to vote for any of the four candidates, you're going to have to vote in the Republican primary. If you're a Democrat, you vote, you cannot vote for the, uh, you cannot vote for any of the four. Is that correct? So it's not going to be a general election type situation here where you could cross party lines. But as far as the primaries involved, if you want to vote for the judge, you're going to have to vote in the Republican primary. Correct?
And that's going to be true for who takes back to September one too, because nobody else is ready.
Yeah, recognizing, so Hobbs, I have a couple of questions about how we get these resolutions done. Going by this procedural rules that was in our package, Gary, I had sent you an email and asked you some questions about this resolution. You never responded to me, so, number one, who sponsored it? And number two, did it go to any committee? No, it did not go for a committee. So with that being said, I mean, on page. I got your questions Monday in the morning and I haven't had time to even think about responding to them. Well, I told you this was pretty important, I'd like to know before we got there, right? Because, I mean, we're breaking our own rules by not following section K, right? It clearly states that two people have to sign it, then it gets a number, and then it goes to a committee. It can't get to the floor until those two things happen. Do we have the resolution signed up to the sponsor last night? Okay, did they go to a committee? So who sponsored the one that went to the committee? Because the copies I have have no signature.
Number three, that was one y'all have down, but it's, but it's, nobody signed it. Everybody knows that.
So, listen, we can either do the rules or we can amend it. I, I, I'm okay with either one, I'm just saying, listen, you know, at the end of the day, it's good to know what we're supposed to be doing and I would just like to know.
Right. This isn't the first time y'all have sent in procedural rules.
It's first time I've seen it.
That one that first came on. That made it out to everyone.
Well, so does that make it okay now?
Whatever you want to go on it, that doesn't matter.
You're really talking to, I'm talking to the mayor, you're not the chair of the committee.
No, not, but I'm going to take it out and if I send it to budget finance, that's the resolution two thousand twenty oh three.
It shouldn't have a number to sign, right?
No, they get a number and then they're signing.
No, that's not what it says. I'm sorry, it doesn't say that. It says it can't get a number to sign.
Well, I'm just surprised that nobody can do that before now.
You can vote, I mean, I guess it just takes us reading it.
Okay, I'm just trying to mediate the situation. I don't like it when it's either. All right, um, what if we were to postpone, is it possible, Mr. Pedigee, if we can postpone this until it goes to the correct committee? And on top of that, is it possible along those lines to add something in this resolution as well that can follow the same rule and point out the commission receipt? So that can be added to the resolution? So that way it takes care of both items and goes to a committee, it follows the process, and then it's postponed to the next meeting? So it's, it's kind of all handled in one sweep?
Yes, ma'am. What, what you would need to do is this item will need to be referred to a committee. And in that motion referred to committee, you would need to specify that they report back and have it ready for the March meeting.
And I can't do a limit or whatever, so you can do it. It counts for efficiency?
Well, thank you, gentlemen, we can do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I had something to add, if I may, if you did that, our March meeting is the, uh, after the end, and that will be after the election. But it's only ten days after the election, so. It really wouldn't delay anything, uh, if, you're just talking about a week in there. It would still be carrying out the, it would, it would still be carrying out and following the, the vote if you did it on, on that date. You know, it's still, you could still address it, it'd just be, uh, there wouldn't, you know who had won if that happens on the committee.
Just keeping in mind that the time crunch would have, I agree with you to follow the rules, it's also clear to me that most of us still bring rules. There's no reason we can't suspend the rules tonight to deal with this one item, so I move to suspend the rules for this item.
Second. Can't, can't relate to suspending the rules, I mean, doesn't require two thirds vote.
At this time, let's hope please, all of suspending the rules, two thirds vote.
If you suspend the rule, it requires two sponsors for field as mentioned in y'all's.
Okay, the motion to suspend the rules requires a two thirds vote. Unless, uh, there's an exception to that, but it doesn't hit the exception. That would mean that, the exception is, if notice had been given prior to this meeting, if you're going to suspend the rules, then the simple charging. That doesn't fit this situation. So it requires a two thirds vote. And, uh, you're voting to suspend the rule that was mentioned by Mr. Hobbs regarding a resolution and the two sponsors and, and those issues. That's, that's my understanding, that's what the motion is to suspend rules. If that motion to suspend the rule passes, then that allows you to go ahead and vote on this particular resolution now. If it fails, then you would, you know, back up to the debate and you postpone it, refer to committee or whatever you decided to do. You cannot debate suspending rules. That's correct. No, you can't, you can't, you can't suspend. The, the motion to suspend rules takes the rest of the time that you have. Yes, I mean, that's, uh, that would have to be taken care of there, I assume, before you can vote.
She's obvious, um, she's trying to make it for the, who's seconded.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the discussion and go back and start by the committee. I thought you said. If not, you can just use his clicker. He's got it.
Eighteen yes, two no.
Okay, so here, go back here.
Right.
We know, back up to the back. Chair recognizes Ellen.
I just have a procedural question before we have the motion. Since legislative was already here, could we not have called a meeting, made a resolution, and then voted? Just asking a question.
Since you're already here, we'd like to ask. We already have the tip before twenty-eight. Now, we want to go into this, because all of us know you did it in December, and we, uh, chair recognizes Ashlyn.
Okay, now that we're actually talking about the resolution, I'd like to make a motion to amend it to include the commission amendment.
This is discussion on commission draft amendment. I would go to address the Chandler draft, but it would not be appropriate now that we have twenty funding members present to readdress the voting on the commission race. Two-thirds majority to change the agenda, I would take. You have a senior there. We now have a national commission president. How about two-thirds majority can change the agenda to re-vote on the, uh, the commission race issue? We have the Republican member now.
Point of order, we're discussing, uh, something totally different, and I don't personally don't think this-
No, no. The amendment's what I'm discussing, the amendment is to have commissioners, uh, if you're able to see, include this, not through this resolution, this is exactly what we're talking about.
It's about the election, though, is what we're talking about here, or not?
No need for asking press amendment if we re-vote.
Unfortunately, based on Robert Truitt's order. You have to deal with what's on the floor. And Mr. Hunt is correct, if, if the commission decides to re-vote, then, uh, and one, one person gets eleven votes, then that would render, if this amendment passes, and it becomes part of it, that would, that would, in a sense, you know, feel a way of that. But, from the standpoint of Robert Truitt's order, you got to deal with her amendment now, and this motion, and then later on, you could make a motion to suspend the rules for re-vote.
That's why I made it part of my discussion, sorry about that, we had an option.
Okay. So now we're voting on earth. Actually, chair recognizes Ashley, that's why.
This is a follow-up on Dennis's, so it doesn't pertain to the amendment, should I comment on this?
Say again, Ashlyn.
My response to your question was a follow-up to Dennis regarding re-voting, so it doesn't pertain to the amendment, so please be quiet.
I guess my question is, Jackie, you abstained last time, are you going to this time? There'd be no need with your- I'm just pulling, and I recommend you don't vote.
More discussion on these amendments.
President Chairman, state the amendment, or have someone state the amendment clearly.
Actually, correct me if I did not get this, uh, correct. But my understanding is that she is asking for the seat that is vacant, the included, uh, with this resolution that we're voting on regarding the judge, so that, uh, whenever this election occurs in March, whoever is elected will automatically act as, uh, become a candidate. Is that correct, Ashlyn?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, good time, I'll call.
What?
This time, let's vote, please. On the only amendment.
Yeah.
Just a majority of this.
Eighteen yes, two no.
Okay, so now we go back and put a vote on these, on this one. So now we're voting on the resolution as amended. Especially. Let's vote, please. That's probably glad this resolution resolved.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, okay, now, which, uh, speaking. You don't have to call it.
Tennessee, resolution two thousand twenty oh four, resolution to establish compensation for employees or attendants at either a full commission meeting or other committee meetings included after fourth party meeting and a compensation, or voting committee members who are named their commissioners or any employees.
Okay, this was, maybe, two times I've looked him, uh, since he made, referred to the budget fund, and voted to pass on to the committee for this. So I have a motion, I have a motion by him, second by Ashlyn, to approve, discussion. And everything done, let's vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Budget amendments?
We've got three amendments in our packet. Each one has explanations, they've all been approved by Budget and Finance. Anybody has any specific questions about these numbers? You would ask me all? If not, um, we give a motion to approve, all due consideration.
Okay, this was the third, uh, Budget Finance, their motion, uh, we have a motion by, by what, second by Max Orton, especially. Now, let's vote, please.
Um, second item is the budget calendar, we're required by TCA to have this on the agenda in January, and if not, then we have to go by a tougher schedule. So this has been special and approved by Budget Finance. So, you know, we do change some of the things on it sometimes a time, but this is what we will follow.
A motion to approve, a motion by David, second by what? Especially. Everything done, let's vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Okay, we'll move on to reports, sustaining committees. Budget Finance.
Been sending out a meeting, so it took a long time, but we're mainly dealing with preparations for the budget, and, uh, a large part of it's going to involve, uh, potential debt. Some of it is, uh, probably going to be approved by Budget Finance on school refunding, so we can save money on existing bonds without really impacting their expenses much, what they owe. Uh, but there will be other considerations we're going to look at. Not bringing any of, or the full commission at this time, until we get a bigger picture of what the whole budget is.
Legislative Committee?
We didn't have a meeting last month, but everything that we discussed was pretty much covered tonight. And I told you about the additional committees that we were addressing, but I will get with the chairman and legislative, and we will go and hopefully have a meeting for our hand, even though we're not having one in February, to see if we can address the items that were presented today, and then we can go forward with the resolutions.
Health, Work, and Recreation Committee?
Uh, Health, Work, and Recreation did not meet last month, we will have a meeting the fourth Tuesday, and this one, uh, and I do apologize for being late, I've been in Nashville since, I had to leave about five-thirty this morning, I sit to have surgery, and, uh, it was late in the afternoon before they gather in the room, so this time I got in, had to wait a little longer, I dropped him off this morning, and, uh, let my brother-in-law down there, and called with his car to bring her back tomorrow, and I had to take the ride back from Alabama. It is nice, uh, worked out pretty good, I had a late day, followed down.
Calhoun?
We, uh, last chance, D.C., we've got several things going on with, uh, Calhoun, they deal with all of the structures that the Calhoun County Government owns. We have, uh, one of the issues, we got, believe the new roof, um, the, uh, Health Department that's over there behind the old hospital in Carter. Uh, we got a pretty substantial need to replace the flap roof. All of us know flap roofs are inherently going to leak, so we're going to have an engineer study and put in a hip or gable type roof system, and we're still working on that. Uh, the courthouse, we have pretty many to do a bunch of painting and stuff. The, uh, the Calhoun County Historical Society is sort of, they pretty much, uh, occupy the whole of this whole. Uh, Calhoun, they asked Mayor's Office, due to the fact that courthouse, the old courthouse, is, uh, on the register, National Historical Structures, Tennessee Historical Society provides grant money. This county does not have a grant writer, that would be a great thing, if we did have a grant writer, uh, that could do the application process. Calhoun, they asked Mayor's Office to send a letter to the Calhoun County Historical Society that they occupy the building and use it to apply for a grant with the Tennessee Historical Society, and that, uh, grant application process, I think, had to be completed by December. Did the Calhoun County Historical Society respond back?
I talked with them regarding that, they've been reviewing that.
Okay, so that's all I know about that. Now, the, uh, if you guys remember, the training corporation comes up with, uh, with some pretty, I guess, a unique system in which they go through, uh, we did it with the school system, and from all, uh, evidence, the school system is really happy with what they've done in energy savings, by upgrading everything from light switches to actually big air handling units on the roofs of the buildings. So, Calhoun, we deal with buildings, we know the building we're sending, and needs a lot of work up as far as HVAC units, and, uh, some lighting has been improved over the years, that Robert Gillum, who's over there, I think, does a great job. But anyway, we have, Calhoun, has approved a project that the training corporation had presented to us, it would take a pretty good amount of money to implement this upfront, but if you don't know about it, their program, they guarantee that energy savings will pay at service the day. And it's, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to pass something up like that. And Calhoun does not spend money, so we have approved it, we send it over to Budget Finance, Budget Finance, we're going to do massage the numbers, hopefully that come up with something where we can move forward with it before the ninety-one-hundred degree days get here and we get all our HVAC equipment done. Animal control, if anybody has ever been to a doctor, looked at a dog, now Calhoun County animal control has another profession, you have to walk onto city property, management of city property. It's been a huge problem, we can't get volunteers, we have identified a piece of property that Calhoun County Government already owns, we're discussing, uh, need restrictions of the county attorney's looking into that, hopefully we get something to decide real quick, and it will be, uh, it will be a great thing if we can get out of the city property with our animal control. Uh, the girls that we have there now are doing a great job, it's the facilities are just holding us back, it's, uh, it's that phone back around our neck, it's a challenge. So anyway, that pretty much is Calhoun, thank you.
Law Enforcement?
We had a meeting last Thursday, nothing new to report, I would love to commend the chairman on his hard work.
Personnel compensation?
Uh, due to the holidays, holiday Monday, we're going to be on Wednesday, this kind of Wednesday, at, uh, five o'clock.
Oh, it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday next weekend.
Okay, stay corrected, my members, it's Tuesday, five o'clock. I think that where it's the fourth Tuesday, due to the throw.
Any segments or now, or announcements from the commission?
Okay, I appreciate all of you being here tonight, we have now moved, uh, photo comments second up, so we already addressed that. I would like to thank Randy Green here representing Randy, and Brian here representing Ben Horne. And, uh, this time, I would have taken a motion to, what's your? All the paper, please, please.